Our first time having a mayor's town hall at one of our public museums, I think. So in all of my brilliance, I decided. No, really, I'm just joking, I'm just joking. I just decided to be able to show off some of the things we're actually doing here in the city. We are about to start, but I know the Flight Academy wanted to make a really quick announcement and let you all know about something that is coming down and they were holding, they were holding, but I'll let them announce it now. Somebody from the museum or the Flight Academy? What's your name?
Hi, everyone. My name is Tyrone. I'm one of the flight instructors here for the Chappy James Flight Academy. So this Saturday, we're actually doing a backpack giveaway for the kids of the community. So it'll be free food for them, free backpack, field backpacks. And we'll just be here in this pavilion right here, just giving out backpacks. So you guys are more than welcome to come out, invite whoever you want to. We'll be giving away over 100 backpacks for the community with hot dogs, chips, drinks. And it's all free for the, for the kids, and that's from noon until 3:00 P.M. So we would love to see you back here on Saturday.
Okay, I'll be brief for everybody, because I can't say my name. There's some wonderful things happening with the City of Pensacola and the Pensacola Historical Society. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, and the Pensacola Historical Society and the Pensacola Trust. Oh, the Florida Historic Trust. We have obtained funding for a new Flight Academy. $470,000. It's in three parts. And one is they're going to double the space of the Flight Academy. Many of the kids who've come through the program during the summers and on the weekends, they've done it for 28 years. They're going to have twice the space, hopefully twice more, computers. Secondly, it's going to affect our offering of things, because I'm, I'm, I'm committed to putting in something on women. You know how I feel about that. So we're going to work on that. And then thirdly, for this grant, it's a small space, and we've really done, the city's done a great job with making that. We are part of the City of Pensacola, and we are part of the, the museum and grounds of. There are 96 places. And regardless of what happens between now and then, I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank this lovely lady for all of her hard work. I want to thank all the other people in the community who've worked to make this a reality. Mr. Ellis Jones, it's Diane Robinson, Ross Prateras, and Lynn Robertson started in 2013. I blew them off. I didn't have time. I was working on a lifetime achievement award. And you know how it is when you're working for the community? You don't have time to do important stuff. But they made sure that the reality came here. A male young lady that lived up the street, and she actually said, well, I was here when they gutted the building. Well, you know, I was here when they built it. So that's a nice thing. But we appreciate that. We appreciate all the support, and we want to expand this. My goal is to make it possible for more children to come here. The starting pay for airline pilots, it's $184,000. The average pay for people who work online is $84,000. Hello, why would you not want to show our young boys and young girls and other people in the community to come and prosper? And the mayor's been working on things like that. So I want to thank the Flight Academy, I'm their partners in crime. And I want to thank Mrs. Toni Broughton, who's helped on so many of the projects that have been part of. I want to thank Mrs. Mrs. Jewel Canada, Lynn, and I want to thank, my favorite all-time person is Ms. Georgia Blackman, because they've helped me to become successful. Oh, forgot Mr. Charles. Yeah. All right. Can't forget him. Oh, yeah. And, and he, because their group adopted this place and made it a reality. And Abraham Talbot was active, he wasn't here. So if you start coming in, you miss people. But I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I want this place to be what you would like it to be, and I'm going to help. I thank you.
So Mayor Robinson's going inside, and this is his town hall? Now he just put my name on the paper. It even says, "Oh, Mayor Robert Robinson" in the beginning. Okay. Yeah, go get him, go get him, please. Good evening, everyone. And thank you so much, Mother Blackman, for coming. You all know, you all know Mama Georgia doesn't come outside for just anybody. But she came out for me and for you today. So thanks, so thank you so much.
I, 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 right before we went in, I was supposed to go use the restroom, and I realized I was not going to make it all the way through this whole thing. So I had to run real fast. I apologize. I apologize. Um, if we could stand real quick and just have a brief prayer and a pledge of allegiance? Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather here together. Thank you for the weather, thank you for the people, and thank you for just an awesome community that we have here. Please engender in us a spirit of cooperation and working together so that we can do your will. In your name we pray, amen. Well, thank you very much. Happy to get the town hall meeting started. I, I, as well, would like to thank everyone associated with the Chappy James Museum for giving us the tour. Uh, Dr. Williams gave me the tour before, and I got to see a little bit of it just now again, but it's a great thing. It's a great asset to have, and certainly we're very proud of, of General James. Um, I happen to share his exact same birthday, 50 years after him. So, uh, so I knew when he turned 100, because that meant I was turning 50. So I knew that. But we're happy to be here, and I really want to thank Councilwoman Broughton. She came up with this idea. She has great ideas all the time. I'm like, hey, let's do it. So this is a great thing. Weather turned out, I was a little bit scared, I will admit, at times. Uh, but overall, it's turned out to be, weather's turned out great, and it's been, it's been good. Um, this is really our chance to hear from you about what's going on. We got a few things we would like to talk to you about, but we have a lot of people behind me. Uh, there are about 800 men and women that are employed by the City of Pensacola that do an amazing job every single day. They come to work, and they come to work for you, um, and, and trying to, to work to make sure that you don't have to think about things that they're taking care of. Your garbage is picked up, your streets paved, uh, and swept. Uh, you, you, you have police and fire taking over, watching over, making sure your home's safe. Uh, and you have so many other things that are happening in this community because there's 800 men and women. Some of them are right behind me. Uh, they have different departments, and they will be more than happy to answer questions. This is really about you. There are a couple of things we wanted to talk about tonight, and while I was, I was like, man, I, I figure out, but all of these are incredibly important, um, things that are going on. We've got an active transportation master plan that's going forward. Uh, that's really trying to figure out how we can look at ways of, of doing more than just riding cars. What we can be active with our, with, uh, with bicycle and pedestrian, and realizing that we've got to make our roads safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. One of which, uh, we're still working with the state. Uh, our two roads, MLK in the front and Davis in the back are one-way. We want to look at making a conversion to those things, to back to two-way, thinking it will slow traffic down, make things safer for you and the neighborhood, make safer for, for people going through that area. I mean, for the most part, this is not a commuting park, and people go too fast through here. We know that, we hear you, and we think we have a solution in working with the State of Florida. These are state roads, though, so we are working with that. Um, we are having Hollis T. Williams Park, which is just beyond us, under the interstate, named for the first African-American who was a council member. Since Reconstruction. My historian always makes sure I say what's correct. Um, so since Reconstruction, first, first African-American, um, city council member. Uh, that park is going to be a significant improvement to our stormwater. Uh, there's going to be about $20 million in stormwater that's going to be related to that, helping deal with, uh, uh, and improve issues related to flooding and other things that happen through that area. Uh, but it also is going to bring amenities that we've got, a number of which, some of which are cultural, historical amenities, which I know the councilwoman was very much about, because there was a neighborhood. And she, she always talks about the fact there was a neighborhood under there that was disrupted and removed. And, uh, it's going to be, have some things that are going to go back to honor that neighborhood and the people that were there, uh, that were displaced by the, by the interstate. Uh, so that's coming. We sort of kicked off yesterday with the Blake Doyle Skate, uh, Skate Park is going to be on south of the police station. But we got a lot of things that are happening north of the police station, north of Cervantes, that will be, uh, will be real additions and amenities to this area. We had to wait to go through the restore project that the county has, but now we're ready to begin that process. Um, and we're working with the county on that. Sidewalk projects, we've got, um, a new South Side, uh, from East Cervantes, I mean, East Hernandez Street, from North Hayne to Ninth Avenue. Uh, new sidewalk of East Side on Fairfax Drive from Hart Drive to Fairfield, uh, Fairfield Drive. And new sidewalk, uh, on West Side from Hart Drive to Fairfax Drive, uh, excuse me. West Side of Hart Drive from Fairfax to Ninth Avenue. All the above sidewalks are expected to be installed in summer of, of 2023. Uh, so those projects have been, have been left for next year, so we're, we're excited. Got those in the budget, just need the councilwoman to approve our budget. So, uh, we get that approved, we'll have those sidewalks. East to Har, uh, drainage improvements. We've got a project, um, on East to Har Drive from Ninth Avenue to Menendez. Engineering funds are available October of 2022. Construction dollars are sold to pursue other grants. East Fairfield and 12th Avenue intersection drainage project. Uh, this project addresses standing water on the east side of East Fairfield. At 12th Avenue intersection draining improvements and was advertised to bid in summer of 2020, and we are expecting the bid results soon. Long Hollow Drainage Basin Improvements, uh, that really flows into Hollis T. Williams. Uh, so again, we will be moving that forward. We have, uh, some operations, we have some lights and signals. Uh, FPL is doing an LED conversion. Council passed that last month. Uh, so a lot of the lights in here will be converted to LED. Um, that should help you see more light, um, and, and should, should make it better. Uh, that, that work should be, go from late October to early November, with completion in August of, uh, excuse me. It will start somewhere between late October and early November, and will end in August, uh, to September of next year. So again, uh, they will be doing work in all districts simultaneously as the plan. Streets, we have damaging curb replacement on 70th Avenue, doing a cross street, uh, very minor. We have things here with our housing department, and I'll let Marcy, if you have any questions. We certainly have our housing assistance, our residential housing repair programs and buyer assistance. Uh, Marcy's certainly here, and her team can answer any questions for you on that. We also are working to set up our attainable housing infill program. We'd like to take lots that have been, that's cheated, that have come back to be public. We'd love to get them back into service and have an opportunity to put housing on those that will be for affordable housing. So we are working with that pro, project as well, and we're going forward. Neighborhood services, several, their, their grant programs right now are open submission, which closes at the end of August. So please, if your neighborhood has a, has a grant program they'd like to do through our Neighborhood Grants Program, please go ahead and get that in, that will close out at the end of this month. And Kelsey Powell is your contact at, at 435-850-435-1682. I kind of give away my age, not giving the 850. Uh, projects that are completed is the Catalina Square Playground. It was installed new playground equipment. Uh, Callaway Basketball Courts are installed new basketball court. East Pensacola Heights, uh, Center of Res, uh, renovation, that's not here, but Es, Es Tremondo Square Play, uh, Playground, improved parking lighting and parking equipment in there. And the CRA has a number of projects I'll let councilwoman go through. But these are several things that are going on. We've obviously got our, our, uh, budget is in process right now. Council will be meeting next week to look at those things. We have a lot of our projects for next fiscal year, like those sidewalk projects that we talked about that will be in there. If we can get those things going, we'll, we'll have, have things happening. We, we got a lot of good people that are ready to do good work, so we hope the budget will go through and we'll, we'll keep moving forward. But I'm going to let the councilwoman talk, and then we're really here to hear you, hear what you have to say.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Um, right now I'm serving as Chair of the CRA. And if I'm correct, some of, some of this is in CRA and some of, some is not. So, um, I guess, yeah, so we have handouts right here to let you know if you're in the CRA. Um, I really want to talk to you all and let you learn a little bit more about what we're doing as far as getting money available to restore houses. I know some of you were a bit discouraged with the program we had. The technical name was like this facade program, right? Yeah, right, the residential property improvement. You know, this was before I was elected, but they knocked on doors, and we honestly, we didn't get a lot of turnout. We didn't. And now I'm hoping that you all are willing to revisit that, because it's essentially money from the city to fix your houses. The catch was that you had to put it under a, um, to put it under a, what's the, what's the term? Like a lien, yeah, yeah, a lien, a lien, yes, a lien. And I know a lot of you didn't like the idea of that, but think about it. If you don't plan on moving, if you don't plan on going anywhere, then, then the lien was really just a way to make it so where, just say a developer couldn't come in, get the money for the program, and then sell it. We had to have a way to guarantee that you would stay in your home. So we figured, if this is your home, you're going to be here anyway. Why not just say we're going to put a lien on it so you can't sell it? Now, there's something else, there's another concern, if you do decide to sell it, if you do want the city to fix up your house and, and, uh, you know, we're, we're not in home improvements like that. This whole mission was to keep people in their homes and keep people in the neighborhood. So we tried to work it out the best we could to make it so that you're able to get your house fixed up. And we see a lot of the houses in this neighborhood, in this community already. Some are standing, some look like the museum used to look before we got here, right? And that, we, we know that we come from a very proud, um, background and community, and your grandparents were working in folks' kitchens to keep the house together, right? They were working on somebody's railroad. And so for us to just let it go, or for us to just sell it off, when the government is saying, here, we have money for you to stay in your community, I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it. I think it's worth more than just slamming the door and saying, oh, a little lien, we don't need it. But we're willing to listen to your concerns, but I mean, if you are, if you're trying to leave, then you don't, you don't need it anyway. But if you're trying to stay, that's what this is for. So I want to be clear about who, who this is really targeting. Um, and of course, the Chappy James Phase Two, they just announced how they're going to expand the museum and of the attainable housing and affordable lot acquisition and development. So there's the site right here that used to be a gas station, and there is the other side, the, yeah, the church? There, there's the gas station here, and then what's the other lot? Okay, well, well, I just know the gas station. So basically, what the city is, um, taking lots to put housing. And we know that affordable housing is an issue now. And we also know that a lot of you who own homes here have, um, been getting harassed to sell your properties. Please tell them no. I don't even care if you do it politely or not, to be honest. But you're, we're not selling, we're not selling our neighborhoods. Not when your grandmother had to clean folks' kitchen all day to just give it away for pennies, or you sit on it. You sit on it until you're ready to sell, if you don't have grandchildren to pass anything down to. But we know the price of some of these houses now. And it's in your best interest if you want to pass something down to your family to just wait. These neighborhoods are gentrifying like nobody's business. And you all know it took a court case to get me here, so I guess what, what some people are saying is they're ready for me to go, right? I don't know. But if we remain in our neighborhoods and protect our neighborhoods, then we put ourselves in a position to where we can guide it, right? One of the things that I'm really interested now in looking at is how we can grow this black middle class. And I'll tell you this, then I'm going to shut up, because I know you have questions. I went and asked somebody for a donation when I, when I did the June 15th. And this person is, you know, is a wealthy person, and they told me no. And they told me no because their competitor was also contributing. I said, okay, fine, that's your money, you can do with it what you want. But I remember a day where we were able to take care of ourselves. And we were able to pass the collection plate and write those checks and do things to look out for our own children so that we wouldn't have to go begging in places. And, you know, this is my book of T. Washington talking, so y'all just got to bear, bear with it, okay? So I envision us getting back to that place in our community, to where we grow what is a black middle class. And I don't, I'm not afraid to talk about race. I have two degrees in African-American studies. So when we can start to rally around something, and also with the help of people who understand the value of this heavily African-American community and want to contribute it to it without exploitation, then that's going to be what helps us sustain. So it's more than just writing a check to this organization and that organization. And I do need you to write those checks. But what I'm also saying is about giving your time and your commitment, so all of us can rise, so all of us can come up. And I want to thank you all for just staying in your communities and passing down to your families, so we will have what can become a stronger black middle class to sustain ourselves, and we won't have to beg nobody for nothing. How about that? You didn't hear that? You didn't hear it? Um, questions?
Okay, so I have the microphone, so if any of you...
Before we do that, real quickly, I just, I, I, I was remiss in saying something if I didn't say it. Um, in, in case you hadn't noticed it, um, the councilwoman has, has very strong opinions, and she wants the improvement of this community. And that's all of it. Uh, she definitely wants District Five. She expressed that very clearly, but I found her to be on everything that we need. I can't say enough good things about, um, Councilwoman Broughton and what she does. Um, she does harass me all the time about different events, and we, we managed to get an incredible June 15th put together. Um, and I was very happy to contribute and help, uh, as a part of that in any way we could to make that happen. But there are so many events that happen across the, uh, this community. There's so much culturally and historically, not just in District Five, but all across the city, uh, that she's very passionate about. Uh, she does an amazing job on that, and, um, I'm just very thankful. I, I don't live in District Five, but I'm incredibly thankful that you have elected her in District Five to, uh, to be in this seat. So she does an incredible job.
So with that being said, I have the microphone. I have the microphone, and if you all would like to speak, please try and get my attention, and I will, you know, do my best to get all of you.
I'd like to address a couple of the things that you referred to.
Put it a little closer to you.
Okay. The, one of the programs that you mentioned that allows people to repurpose their homes?
You got to hold it like right up to your mouth. There you go.
I, uh... My name is CJ Charles. I'm a project manager for the Eastside Neighborhood Improvement Association. Uh, I actually live in East Hill, but I own property in this, in this, uh, area. As far as the, the refurbishment of the houses, when they came out with that program, I told them it was not going to work because of the lien. You have a lot of older people in the, in the neighborhood, and that's, I told them it's going to turn them off. But you did, but they were not interested in doing that. Another thing I wanted to ask, I know the emphasis from the city now is on affordable housing. What is the city's, uh, impression of, of, of affordable housing? Do y'all have a dollar figure? Because technically, all housing is affordable, but by whom? By whom? And, uh, the, the reason, going back to the previous thing, the reason for the refurbishment of the land originally was to keep the, the look of the neighborhood pretty much the same as far as single-level homes. Look at what we got now. So, but what, what...
I'll just say real quick, I prefer the term attainable housing, and, um, which in, in my mind means that, you know, a working family will be able to, to purchase their first home. And we're not saying, you know, anything on the low end either, though, right? Like, somebody's going to have to get up and go to work. But, but, do you want to speak a little bit more on the... Okay. So I, I just wanted to be clear. A lot of times when we say affordable housing, of course, that term has different meanings in different places. But as it relates to the, to the lien, that was really just to make it so that older people would be able to, um, have their houses fixed up. And remember, they're not going anywhere anyway. So unless they leave this place, you know, they had planned, we had hoped that they would be in a situation where after three years, then, you know, it's transferred back over and they wouldn't sell it. Or, or no one could, you know, convince them to sell it, because we know that happens too. But, uh, Ms. Marcy?
I, I will simply say on the lien, that is the challenge we have, because the idea is not to allow somebody, and it's unfortunate, because you have good programs, and there's always somebody who's going to take advantage of a good program. And unfortunately, there are people who would take advantage of that and sell it, and then they would be making profit from it. So there has to be an intention, I think, and I think Councilwoman Broughton did a great job of explaining of who it's intended for. Some people intend to live there. And if we made a mistake in, in how we did that, then I was unaware of that, and I will take the blame for that. And, uh, we will, we will try to do a better job of expressing that, uh, better and getting out in the neighborhoods and telling a better story. Uh, but I hope you understand that if we didn't have some kind of rules, it would be taken advantage of, and that's the reason we have the rule. But, uh, but we should do a better job of telling you what it is and how to make it work for you.
But I also understand how, I also understand how a lot of us, how a lot of us got here. Um, a lot of us come from, you know, areas like that was under the interstate, where we were swindled out of our property. A lot of us, uh, came from an age group where you really couldn't trust the government, I'm just going to be honest. Um, we just learned in Tuskegee about Chappy and the Tuskegee Experiment. So you're coming from a group of folks who is not without cause, that you're just not going to, at least raising eyebrow when somebody knocks on your door and says, you know, put a lien on your house, but let me own it. That, that doesn't sound right, right? So we could have done better in our messaging, and we will commit to doing better from now on. But I would like one of the, Marcy, to talk a little bit more about the program, because if you need your house painted, if you need the facade, if you need anything, you know, little things, then this is the program we have now. And I'm hoping that you all will take advantage of this opportunity.
Just to kind of address the attainable or affordable, it does base on an income level. So we're targeting a certain income level. Most of our dollars that we're using for this are federal dollars, and those are typically tied to somebody earning 80% or less of area median income. For a two-person household, that's somebody at about $49,500, so just a little bit under $50,000 a year. And if you look at it, typically, when you go to a bank or talk to any of the lenders, they say that you can't spend more than 30% of your income on your housing costs. So we're really for something that's attainable for somebody. We're talking somewhere around $150,000 to $170,000, $180,000. And that's why we have some of the programs we have, like, um, our Home Buyer Program, which helps people with that down payment closing cost, because you might could make that mortgage payment, but it's hard to make up that savings to make that initial down payment to get into a property. And then like the councilwoman and the mayor both said, we both, the CRA and the Housing Office, have programs in place that will help you repair your home that you're already in, because I agree. Retaining that homeownership in the community is also one of the big, big, important pieces of attainable, affordable housing in our community. We want to keep those folks that have been living there for generations still in those communities. We both, like I said, we both offer those programs. Our program also has a lien that goes with it through the Housing Department. It's forgiven at the end of five years, so you meet that commitment and it's forgiven. We've worked with many, many folks in this neighborhood through our program over the years. So if you have questions, you have brochures here, I encourage you to pick up a brochure, give us a call. We'll be glad to walk you through the process, meet with you, you know, make you feel more comfortable. Because I understand exactly what the councilwoman said. You know, if somebody knocked on my door and said, I want to give you this, and, oh, by the way, I'm going to put a lien on your house. Well, I'd be like, oh, what do you want to do about that? So that one-on-one conversation, so feel free to give us a call and talk.
Well, thankfully, thankfully, the beautiful thing about museums is that they become centers of the community and their community centers in a, in a, in a way, right? So hopefully, our wonderful museum will sponsor this conversation, where they can have someone come from the city and talk more about this program. Correct, um, Dr. Williams?
Good idea.
Where do you go?
Sure.
Isn't that something like a great idea?
Sounds like a good idea.
To host a, a, a conversation about this affordable housing or attainable housing and these liens and things. Thank you, thank you, because I know when I worked here, people used to come all the time asking for brochures about where to get hands and things like that. So, you know, became a, a real center of the community.
And they can do it for people who need information, which they have to have when they come with a black shirt or direct them to who they need to see. We don't mind at all.
Thank you, thank you.
If they're helpful service to the city, it does make good.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Is the mic working? No?
No.
No?
Just be glad that-
The question I'm going to ask, now during the budget process, does that include the nineteen million dollars the city got left from COVID when, uh, for COVID, the federal government sent down? Is that going to be part of the budget process or the actual budget that the city has regenerated from property taxes?
Uh, Mr. Wallace, the budget is from the, from the, from the taxes, although there are other things in there, LOST, a variety of other things. For the most part, most of ARPA has been spoken by the council. Now, what hasn't been spent will roll over in the budget, but it would have to be reassigned. I believe, and I don't know that Amy's here, I'm not sure, nobody, I don't have an exact-
Dollar figure, but we can-
Sorry. Sorry, we got it, it, this one stopped working, so can you, can you go grab it?
We, we've, most of ARPA has been spoken before, but there is some portion of it that has not. I mean, I know there are some things. I know that, um, uh, Ms. Broughton set up our, our, our cultural affair, our cultural affairs, uh, department of-
We're doing now like some things to work with cultural, uh, cultural things within ARPA projects. We have spent and we have allocated a lot of that nineteen million. There's some still left, yes.
You already allocated nineteen, nineteen million, all of that nineteen million, but you don't know how much you got left out of the nineteen million.
I, I don't, I don't have that exact amount, no. I don't, I don't, I don't. Part of it is because some of the projects we've done have not used all of the money and it goes back in if they don't use it. So we, we've had a few projects we did. Um, one, uh, case that we did, uh, was, was working with, um, with funds, uh, dealing with COVID with, uh-
Um, with Pastor, um, oh, I can see, where Truvan, um-
Can I have a-
Yes, Pastor Williams. And I think Movement for Change, I saw, I saw, uh, I saw Rodney back there earlier, but I knew, I knew that, uh, Movement for Change was also involved in that program. Um, and I think we, we did almost all that allocation, but I think there was some leftover from that. There were, there, there, there are some things here and there that we have. So I don't, I can't pinpoint exactly what we have, but most of that money has been spent for. And like I know, we allocated, uh, or allocated, uh, three million was, was allocated for homelessness. We've spent roughly two million, we have a million left and we're still working through some of those things, taking initiative.
What do you find, Mr. Wallace?
I want to ask you now, all of that nineteen million-
Here, sorry, just don't touch any buttons on it, okay?
All of that nineteen million, how much was set aside for Stormwater?
We did, we did have, we did have some projects in Stormwater. We did have, have some projects, I can't tell you the exact amount, I want to say it was about one point five million, uh, but we did have a number of projects that we have done in Stormwater. So we do have, we do have some projects in there.
And I'm looking forward to meeting Ms. Robinson.
Oh, new cultural affairs, yes.
About the culture?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And sorry about the technical difficulties, we have a new system we're working with. So if you do get the mic, just be very careful not to touch any buttons because I think that's our issue, so.
Hi, um, for the project that's taking place with the, um, Stormwater on Ninth and Tahar-
Yes.
I'm happy for that, um, because I actually live in that area. But also living in that area between Sixth Avenue and Ninth Avenue, and I've put in tickets with the city in the past, um, we have bushes that have grown up into trees and our elderly cannot see around those trees. When they're crossing Taurus Avenue, um, on Tahar, when they're coming off Sixth Avenue, they can't see across those trees. I have stopped city workers to ask them if they could possibly cut them back. Um, there have been numerous wrecks there as well. So if there's something that we can do about those trees. Also, when it comes to the Stormwater, we have an issue right here on Davis and Jordan, right in front of the, the Ice Tower, right there by, um, Spencer Bibbs. Water sits there as well. So if we could possibly add that to the list for the, for the drains as well. And I walk every morning, um, so I walk down Sixth Avenue all the way down to the, to the Civic Center and come back up to Tahar, right? Um, we do have some uneven sidewalks that can cause issues for our elderly when they're walking, um, because it causes a chiropractic problem. And a lot of them cannot go to the chiropractor, but the sidewalks found a lane. And then we also have, um, damage to the sidewalks on, right when you cross over blunt, right on Davis Highway as well. Um, I think that's all, all of my issues.
The second one you said, Davis and Jordan flooding, you know, the second one?
Um, you have the, the bushes that have grown up into trees on, um, between Sixth Avenue and Ninth Avenue on Tahar and trying to cross in that area.
So I'm sure you reported it, it happened.
The ticket disappeared.
So it never came out?
Okay.
And I stopped the city workers. Like I say, whenever I see them out cutting, I ask them if they can cut them back, but I guess that's not-
Is this in the median?
It is, it's in the median.
Oh, in the median, okay. Yeah, we totally can cut those. Okay. Sometimes they're, if they're not in the right of way, we can't go on private property, but if it's in the median, we absolutely can't, so.
Yes, it's the median, so when people are crossing-
And you just get like a regular three over one?
I, I called, I emailed, yeah, yeah. So, um, so it is, it's, it's pretty dangerous for those people to try to, you know, for people to try to get across because you pretty much have to have the whole front end of your car in the lane in order for you to see, you know, that you can, that you can either make the U-turn or cross.
There's Davis and Jordan flooding, then there's the bushes on, what's it again?
Tahar.
It's on Tahar.
And then the uneven sidewalks on Davis.
Davis. When you're walking up Davis, um, when, as soon as you cross over, um, Cross Street, the sidewalks are actually broken and we were actually walking one day and my brother got stuck in one of them, in one of those.
And then it's damage on, we said damage on the-
One.
One. So here's my thing, if you, if you turned this in, if you reported this, I'm just curious, I'm just curious as to why there was a response. I mean, I know in part we have the, we're contracted out with a private company on some of these things, but, but I'm just really interested in why you had to come to a town hall about some bushes. I'm just going to be honest. So, if I can get your name afterwards, I can find out a little bit more about it.
Sure, sure. There's also on Sixth Avenue, um, and Lee or Lloyd, there's a dip, so it holds water as well, but it looks like eventually that's going to just fall and, and probably end up being the same path. I mean, it's right in the middle of the street. Um, it's either Sixth and Lee, Sixth and Lloyd.
Okay. And you got that? All right. We, we, we got that, our, our, and again, sidewalks, we're working through, we have a lot of challenges all over the city. Um, we've been putting in a lot of, we, we, we did a lot of sidewalks that we worked on repair, um, so if something's broken, we'll try to get back out and repair those. I worked on a crew one day when I did that, they had this thing, the, the uneven ones, we can, we can, we can work on that and make that happen. So we got a good crew, they're working it, we'll just, we'll get on that and see when we can get to that. But we, we will absolutely look at what we can do along Tahar right there, so.
All right, I have a question. Uh, I know you have programs to help renovate older houses in the neighborhood. Do you see any programs coming to, um, assist residential landowners to stay in the neighborhood and to build on it in the neighborhood? Not a contractor, someone who wants to remain in the neighborhood, who has a, a lot, you know, sewn for housing, that wants to just stay in the community? Do you offer any kind of programs to assist maybe with the same look of the neighborhood that going through a contractor, a, a qualified contractor, that you can assist with keeping them people inside their community and get them to build on their own land and anything like that?
So you're saying if you got an empty lot in, in the neighborhood and you're going, you're going to help build it something?
Yes.
How do you go about it?
I'm asking.
I'm just, I'm just a frequent question.
Yes.
Currently, we don't have something exactly like that. We are working on, like the mayor mentioned, our attainable housing infill program. Okay, thank you, Marcy. Um, we're working on our attainable housing infill, infill program, um, but that's going to be on city-owned property. Currently, we really don't have something, you're talking about like you already own the property, but you want some financing to help with construction.
Not necessarily construction, some kind of, some kind of aid, like, like for the, the facade and everything, if you want the neighborhood to look the same just by building for another house, people in the community, building the community, does, would the city, you know, offer something to, you know, help?
Yeah, that's the CRA program, actually, yeah.
But does that, does that include building, not, not renovating, but ground-up building?
So what we are working on in terms of building, if you have a private lot, um, and you're looking to build on the private lot, what we could do is we could- Can you hear me?
No.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
All right.
We can provide some technical assistance in terms of how is the city and the CRA working to do that. There are programs available, um, to home buyers that we can share with you. In addition to that, um, we are working on home plans. So that's something that could be available to somebody that wants to build and that would be things that, um, fall within the guidelines of our overlay district, which, um, align with the character. So we are working on those plans, we don't have them available quite yet, but it is something that we're working on.
Okay, so you're saying your plans are just plans for homeowners to, for, for landowners to build your plans on that lot? Is there any kind of incentive to use that plan?
So the, the plan will defray some of the costs in establishing that concept and the floor plan associated with that. So it would help in that, in that way.
I think one of the things we heard about, um, one of the CivCon speakers talked about one of the worst things that you have that, that, that deters people from building is sometimes understanding all the codes and everything else. So if you could have plans already done that, that represent what that is, I, I talk about all the time, so many times you'll look at a neighborhood and yes, they have different siding on stuff, but if you look at really the house design, that one may be brick, this one may be wood, but essentially it's the same design. They, they, they did a lot of these, they flip them over. And so how can we get some plans that really take the question out of yours? So if you want to do that, I know Councilwoman has talked to me about several times about families who have been in there and simply would say, hey, they have other family that would love to come back if they were able to divide their lot and build a house for somebody else or relative to come back in and, and make it affordable. So we're trying to find any of those plans we can. CivCon talks directly about that and, and that would at least help you, uh, in, in defraying down the, the, uh, uh, the, the cost of, um, uh, you know, it wouldn't be as much the construction side, but you have to do plans one way or another for any house you're going to build. So it would help you defray some of those costs in, in setting up your, your, your plans to get building.
And helping people expand their neighborhoods and helping people be able to pass something to their children. In the CRA, we were talking about what we can do to facilitate that. Um, in one of our meetings, we even talked about, um, just say if you have something here on the east side, and we haven't presented it yet because we're trying to work it out, but if you have something here on the east side and you want to build on your empty lot, what could, what might the city be able to provide? And I know you're on your way out, but it'll be either up to, um, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Emeritus Jill Gannon-Win or DC Reeves here to, um, or others, I guess, to, um, decide how much money they're going to give us for that program that we're talking about. Because we're serious about saying, you know, what, what the city can do, being able to help folks rebuild a house that was lost or even if it's just us putting in the sidewalk and they don't have to cover the expense related to putting in the sidewalk.
We're absolutely looking at the infrastructure expenses, absolutely. So, and the councilwoman definitely is going to make sure of those things, whoever is the mayor is, is, uh, is, is addressing those items, so I can assure you that.
I have a question, um, concerning where I stay. I stay on, uh, Berkeley, right on the corner where, uh, Woodland Heights, on that side where Woodland crosses. Um, I'm sorry, where Woodland crosses. And I see there's a huge problem in my neighborhood where there's no lighting. I don't know if you all noticed that, but those lights have been there since I was a kid and I'm forty-three years old, so you can't see. Um, I've had to call, um, Pensacola PD several times, um, not an emergency, but just for people walking up to my door, looking through my window, walking around in the neighborhood that are not, um, my neighbors. The neighbors that live close to me on either side are both elderly, um, they go to bed early, so I'm pretty much the one that's kind of up later because I have children. But I do notice that once they leave from my property, there is a street light on my, at the, um, corner of my lot, but once they pass that, you cannot see them. I don't know what direction they ran, I don't know if they ran into a neighbor's yard, down the street, jumped a backyard, um, we don't know. And it's, it's hard, especially in the summertime. When I come home later, there's kids in the street, you can't see them until you're a street, so my car lights pretty much pass.
Of course, I know, I know what you're talking about because I've called too. So, um, the answer I got was that the peop-, and I might even call them folks, but the answer I got was that the people who own or rent the property have to pay like three dollars a month or whatever it is to keep it on.
Yeah.
So if it's in your yard-
Right. I'm talking about street light, regular little light.
Hold on, hold on. We, we have, we have street lights that we pay for the city, we can work on that. I wasn't sure where you were going.
The street for the city.
Yeah.
Now, these are, these are-
Yeah.
These aren't street lights, these aren't city lights, what I'm saying.
And, and my neighborhood, they are not city lights.
I know, I know.
They are city, okay, because that's what I'm thinking, they're city lights.
We have city lights, we have city lights.
You know, the ones that is on the corner of Fairfield and Berkeley, I mean, Fairfield back, I guess, in Berkeley. And then when you go around the corner where you are, it's the two, it looks like they kind of come on and come off by themselves.
There's one right at the corner, when, after you pass the Woodland Heights Center, there's one there and to the, there's a sidewalk entrance into Pensacola Village, that is city property.
And it's like sometimes, well, that's not, that's, that one is, but sometimes it looks like it'll be on for a few minutes and then it'll flash off, but, no, I know what you're talking about, I thought I reported it quite a good time.
Yeah, but the majority of our lights in the entire neighborhood are yellow. They're not, they're not solar, I would like solar panel. I mean, I don't know if I pay for that one or not. The one at the corner of my lot, it's been on since I've owned my home and I've never turned it off, so. But I mean, if I have to pay an extra three dollars, I don't mind, but to get a white, bright, lit light, I would do so.
Well, like the street light on the corner of, was that Berkeley, I guess, and then the Woodlands?
Yeah, you got Berkeley and Woodlands.
They, they just don't want to pay the three dollars, that's right.
Now, Berkeley and Woodlands, eh?
I'm just not, 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 I know who these people are, I'm not trying to put them out there.
Yeah, but I can say no Berkeley and Woodlands, that city on that one, I can't do it.
What you said about the yellow, that's what we talked about going to the LED. You'll be seeing the new LED lights come in. Now, I don't know when it will happen, but it will happen sometime between this fall and next fall. That was the project that we said was going to start, that was going to start, we just, we just had it come to council the other night. Um, that project is going to start and they said late October, early November and go through August, September of next year. So you will, you will be seeing new lights coming on. Now, there are also private lights, there are private lights, if, if, if the, if, if the, at the entrance Pensacola Village and where they are, they have a private light, that's, that's theirs. But, but the lights that are in, and they're, turn them in that area because those were those little red dots. I knew when I looked at the, they're in, I've seen them right there in Woodland Heights. They'll be, they will be replacing, you're right, they're all yellow right now, they're going to go to a, a white LED light. Now, again, we also have been working with them to make sure that we don't, we want it to be bright and we want people to be able to see, we also don't want to, we, we, we're trying to find that balance where it's not, uh, you, you don't call us up and say, listen, uh, I can't sleep anymore. So we're, we're trying to do a little bit of both, uh, but, but we think we've worked with something that is a balance that, that works in neighborhoods and is roughly, it's, it's brighter, but it's not necessarily more intense than what you have.
And then also the cutting of the, I don't know if that's something that you offer the city, it's not go fire anymore, it's FPL. There is a lot of foliage that hangs over and it's not in yards, it hangs over into There's a lot of foliage that hangs over, and it's not in yards, it hangs over into the street. Is that something that they can, um, address?
Um, we don't typically touch trees that just hang into the street and don't bother traffic. But if it's bothering power lines, FPNL will cut those. We've had a lot of complaints, people upset at the way they cut the power line. We, we don't, we don't necessarily cut trees that are just, that aren't creating a problem. But if they, if you, if you seem to think it's a, a problem, it's gonna be in danger, anything, you, you can contact us and we'll check that out.
Okay, thank you.
I went to high school with Renee, I don't know how she got in her forties, I'm nowhere near.
You don't know?
I don't know, but, but, um, oh, but I will say that I did call about those lights and that's how I learned, the process is a little more detailed than we originally thought. I thought it was just easy to make a call, right? But I think it really speaks to what we can do in the future about getting a quicker process. And, um, I know we all call 311 and we report. And I'll tell you this, when you call 311 and then I call 311, it's the same, they just add it to the list, right? It's not like it pushes it ahead or anything. I think it, it's something to be said about the fact that the light will get turned back on and then it seems like the next day is, is back dim again. And it's not consistent. So I don't, I don't know lighting enough, the guy behind you, the lighting expert, it just happens, so he can tell you like more details. But, but, um, that is something, because I too will report it. And it seems like the next day when I drive around, it's, it's out again. And especially during the summertime with more kids, and I don't even think anyone kids in the village or anything, cause kids are kids. But you just see more kids hanging out later at night and it's become a, a point of concern. And, um, you know, I think one time there was like a big street light and there, it was in the dark, cause none of the lights were on. And I would just hope that, that three dollars that you pay a month for the FPNL lights, that people would just be willing to do it. I spoke to them about, um, creating some type of program to where they can, they were trying to explain to me how if a street light is in your yard and you have to pay the three dollars a month, I think that's what it is, then what, what they could do to kinda make it a little cheaper and set it up to where all of the neighbors kinda share the, the cost, cause they all, we all share that light, right? Especially with it being a bus stop in the, in the beginning of the school year, and of course, when the days are shorter and it's darker. And, um, it's, it'll be dark out there, so we have to figure something out. But at this point, you know what's happening with FPL, I don't even have to, I don't even have to bring it up, but, you know, but we're working on it. We really are working on it.
I did wanna say, uh, a, a, a couple of things real fast. I know, uh, Mr. Wallace, we got the exact amount for you. It is four hundred thousand, two hundred dollars is what's left that is unallocated in ARPA at this particular moment. So, uh, that, that, that is what is, that, that is currently what is unallocated in ARPA. Well, if you can get four council members to vote for it, you got it.
I'm gonna be acting for it, I'm gonna be acting for it.
So, so.
For stormwater.
Oh, okay.
For my, for, for, where I can stop seeing water pooling up around, doing your dope and everybody else doing in the neighborhood.
Thank you, that's my neighborhood transportation president, he was [inaudible 0:32:00.18]
Um, so, we.
Hi, um, I just, my, hi, I'm my classmate to y'all. Uh, so I just, we just got put in District Five, cause we was part of District Six, that kept us in here, we're about six-four and E. And, um, the concern we have with same as lighting, like, but I don't know which pole is wet in the neighborhood, but I'll get on that later. But my biggest concern, cause we have kids in the neighborhood, can you hear me? Okay. My biggest concern in the neighborhood is, um, Blunt Street that I live on is like a racetrack. And so is MLK and Davis. And I know they put in some dips in certain parts of our neighborhood, and I did this because it seemed like the ha- the newer housing, the newer people that are moving in, they get like stop signs and dips in the street, but we don't have any of that stuff in the park we in. So, I, I've been thinking about speed box and stuff, but we already had called like Pensacola PD, um, PD, they put like a, um, what you call it, right, um, a speed, uh, what you call it? Speed count, they, that got put on Blunt Street and they seen that those people fly down the street. And the way my house is set up, when I'm coming out my driveway, I gotta like inch out, inch out, inch out to not get hit by a car coming out. Mr. Ellis can tell you that too, cause he's staying across the street from me.
You're right on Blunt, right?
Right on Blunt, yeah, between Sixth and Seventh Avenue. We have a lot of accidents up there. Cause somebody ran down his gate, which was a month or two ago, about two months ago. So, I mean, it's scary, you can hear the accident happen right down Davis and Blunt like all the time, cause they speeding.
And so you have a new District Five, ARPA now?
Yeah. We, we have, we have, Blunt is one we're working with, that's one that we can control the city. Davis and MLK are state roads, but we are working with the Department of Transportation to look at doing, uh, changing that back to two-way streets, because we think that will, the, 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 the challenge is, these are streets that people collect on and they go, they go fast, unfortunately. That's the, I think the best thing we could do, um, I, I was in office very shortly, I went to South Carolina on something to, 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 uh, Charleston, and there was a similar situation, it was an older, poorer neighborhood that had been a cut-through for people and, and they one-wayed the streets. And the staff there wanted to two-way it, the mayor was not sure in what it would do. And finally, the staff convinced him to two-way it, he said it was the best thing we ever did. And at that point, I've been, I've been trying to get that done with FDIP. I mean, th- this is not our roads, they're, they're their roads. Uh, but we do have a process that, uh, that we're hopefully gonna be going through with, uh, with some, uh, with some funding for safety that is gonna allow us to two-way those two streets. Um, so that is in the process, something we've worked through and we've got a commitment for them, that that's, that's one of their projects they wanna do. So I'm very excited about that. We will see what we can do about Blunt. Um, I know that Chief is here and I know they continue to work through. Now, the one thing we, we, we can do, absolutely, we can come through here, we can give some tickets, so we'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I would like that.
Be always careful what you ask for, cause, uh, cause we, cause we, cause we, we can give tickets. Um, so, uh, but, you know, that's generally, that, that, that's what really gets people's attention, unfortunately, is when they get the ticket finally, they start to slow down. Um, so, you know, we, we, we can, we, we've done some of that. I know that, um, um, uh, uh, down here on Blunt and, and, uh, MLK, um, Ellison Bennett, uh, calls me all the time about that and that we need to, we've done that. We, we did some stuff on, on MLK here related to what Mr. Bennett had wanted us to do. He keeps complaining about, uh, accidents there at Blunt and, and MLK. So, uh, we fully understand and, and we'll work with you on that.
Okay, one other thing about.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause I'm all about Blunt Street, okay? So, so, um, we got street signs and stuff, but, um, I know some parts of Blunt has parking, but we don't. So we got, literally got to park on the grass type, to park in it, you know? Cause like if you go down, you know, on the street, we can't park on the street, like if you go to certain parts of Blunt, they have like outlines for them to park in front of their house. We don't really have that on our part of the street for some reason.
Is that on the corner?
Huh?
Are you at the house on the corner?
No, I don't live at, it's a, it's a red brick house on Sixteen Blunt, I'm the house right next door.
Our, our, our Public Works people are here, so we will absolutely take a look at that and, and put that in and see what we can do. And I see Sherry, I guess Brad can take a look at that from engineering on Blunt Street.
Uh, you don't, you don't have a parking spot in front of your house?
Nope, we had to literally park up on the, the grass park.
Again, I, I, I don't know the, the dimensions and all the other things that we'd have to look at to figure out where it is with the safety, but, but we can, we can do that and, and we, we, we've got that noted, so we will look at that on Blunt.
Did anyone else wanna speak?
First one, I guess, we have second, we, yes, just a minute.
I just wanna ask a quick question, I, I don't need that. Uh, what, what parts of the city are enterprise zones now? Do we have any enterprise zones?
Um, the state did, the state did away with enterprise zones, so we don't have those anymore, um, what we've, what we've got. I mean, we certainly, we, we work within CRA areas that we can, um, and we have things that we can work programs within those areas. You certainly have East Side CRA in, in District Five. Yeah, and so, uh, so we have those opportunities that we can do. I know, uh, West Side CRA, we're, we're very much looking at some things, what we can do with West Servantes there. Um, I think the, the things that, that Councilwoman Broughton talked about, trying to bring back, um, uh, businesses, locally owned, small business, is something we have, certainly minority-based, but really all small business, we're trying to figure out how we can do and grow, uh, grow those opportunities. Cause those are jobs that, that, that are there, it's amazing how many businesses are really under three people. Um, and, and, uh, and, and what we have in this community that work for companies or businesses that are like that. So, um, we definitely are trying to find ways to incent and, and work and make small business happen, especially our CRAs.
I know the last time we, I know the last time we met, you all were, uh, the museum was under District Six. You know, the lines have changed and now you're in District Five. It also speaks to our, it speaks to a lot of things that I'm not, you won't get into right now. But, um, I would like the mayor to introduce you to some of these beautiful people in the back, so you know who they are. So I say call such and such, you know who I'm talking about?
Alright. We're gonna get everybody to, uh, raise their hands. We've got Amy Toodle, otherwise known as Amy Eight, because we have a lot of Amys you're gonna hear tonight. So Amy Toodle is Public Works. Kara Fidler is our city administrator. If you have a chance to meet Kara, hopefully, uh, you've got, Decore's in CRA, she's taking care of everything, talk to you about that. We've got Adrian Stills, talked about moving, he moved over from Osceola, he is now running all of our parks and recs, so Adrian's there. We've got Sherry Morse here that runs, um, she is development services, correct? So, see, I'm trying to remember these new things as well. So, uh, uh, Marcy Whitaker talked to you about housing. Then we have, uh, Chief Eric Randall, who's chief of police, I think, easy. Then we have, uh, Ginny Crainer, who is chief of the fire department, which by the way, our fire department is an ISO one writing after this summer, so. Wanna brag about that? Chief, how many, how many, what, what's the percentage of, uh, of, of fire, fire, fire departments that are, uh, that are, that are ISO one?
In the country, it's less than one percent.
In the country, it's less than one percent. So that speaks to how good your fire department is and the things we've done. We have one of our newest directors, he's doing a great job for us. Uh, Fred Crenshaw is in charge of sanitation. And we have Amy Miller, who is one of our deputy, uh, city administrators, she does a lot of everything. She's the one who tracked down your answer. I mean, that's, I was impressed, in the middle of the thing, she got the answer. So that's the kind of work we've got with, uh, we, we told our fi- oh, yeah, I totally skipped over, I started, I totally skipped over Lawrence Powell and Neighborhood, so you know Lawrence, yeah. So, uh, that's some of our team, uh, they do an amazing job, like, like I said, we, we've, we've done so many of these, no one's asked us a financial question. So we told Amy, uh, Lavoy that she could not come to this. Well, sure enough, we get one and then we get Amy Miller. So that's, that's Amy one to Amy three. Uh, so, yeah, we, we, we gotta remember all of our Amys and their numbers.
Hey, mayor, if we can give you a hand, I really, I appreciate you for the time you serve, and I will be talking to you before you go. But I wanna just thank you for the cooperation you've engaged me in the neighborhoods and what you did for the city.
Thank you, Walter, it's, it's been a privilege of mine. Um, I never thought I'd have the opportunity, uh, certainly raised here, not born here. Uh, 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 my, my father used to say, I was born because I wanted to be close to my mother. Uh, but I was born in Gainesville while they were down, my, my, my father was down in school down there at, at, uh, finishing up his law degree. But quickly thereafter, moved to here and have been here most of my life, except for my time to go away to college. And a few years right after that, came back in ninety-five. Uh, very proud of the opportunity and thankful of the opportunity you, the citizens, have given me to do this for four years, I've enjoyed it. I, I think we've accomplished, uh, uh, I think we've accomplished a heck of a lot. Uh, these four years with COVID and a variety of other things that felt like ten years, um, but, uh, but I feel like dog years. Um, but, uh, but, uh, but, but I certainly have enjoyed it. Um, and, and it's meant a lot for, to me and my family to be able to do it. I think we've put Pensacola in a great place. We have some great leaders here, you have a great team, uh, that's, the, the people that I've introduced you, the people that work for them, we have a great people, we have great leaders. Certainly appreciate what Councilwoman Broughton does, uh, for, for, for this district. So thank you very much. If you stick around, if you have any questions, if you have one that was specific, you didn't wanna ask to one of the team members, please come forward and, uh, ask those questions. We appreciate you being here. The only thing that helps build strong communities and strong cities is having strong, engaged citizens. So thank you for your willingness to come out here tonight and be a part of this. And, uh, Councilwoman, you, you, I'm gonna give you the last chance to speak, but I'm gonna say, you did an amazing job with the weather, I am very impressed. We were, we were sweating bullets, we were sweating bullets, it was gonna rain, it was gonna be hot. And, uh, you have done an incre- this has been a great night, uh, to be in the east side area and, uh, to be here on MLK. And I couldn't, it couldn't have been a better night and I'm so proud we had the opportunity to do it. We wouldn't have, we haven't done this before, we typically done community centers, but you suggested it and, uh, I'm a sucker for a good new idea, so, uh, I loved it. It is a great idea and thank you for thinking of, of getting us out here.
Thank you, thank you. I wanna thank you all for coming, um, it gives us an opportunity to show, I used to work here before I got elected, right? So as soon as I got back here, I just kinda jumped back into my old spot and started giving a tour of people. And I walked into one of the rooms, it was totally different, I didn't know anything that was going on in there anymore. So if you can, before you leave, just get an opportunity to look inside the museum and, um, also the house and, um, or the offices, I guess, and see what they have going on. I want to, uh, thank the, well, Council President Hill for taking care of you all. And now you've been drawn out of her district and now this is District Five, look, she's crying. So, so thank you for your time. And I, I look forward to, to, and I know most of you just from working at the museum, but I look forward to learning, uh, you as, as your representative, because it's a little different. I ask that you not fuss at me as much as you did when I was the tour guide and I was the, you know, worker here. Um, because I would say something and y'all would correct me, because a lot of you knew Chappie and you would add your personal story and ask how I didn't, why I didn't make your personal story a part of my tour. But, but that's okay, because I did. And, um, and I look for, not only to meeting you, but getting more personal stories about Chappie and yourselves. So thank you so much. We have some, yeah, we were, we, we have food here, we were able to support King's Corner Cafe.
I wanna, I wanna handle that.
What you wanna do, hold on?
Okay, I got the crowd looking at me.
Here we go now.
Alright, no, I won't need that. When you come, allow the senior verses to come up. Take, take what you want, eat what you take. The water and the drinks are over there, compliments of the city and this museum. So please come on, come and eat, come and drink. The black containers are for trash, the brown ones are recycled. The recycled people get pissed off when you put garbage in there, because they're trying to recycle.
Friends will get mad, friends will get mad.
Right, so I don't want them to get mad, but use the black containers, please come on by, grab you a little bite, get you something to drink and stay as long as you want, it's nice and comfortable, it's cooler inside, but do see the museum while you're here. And we do have the, the, uh, the flight academy and I would be honored to have you there. So please come on, let's do it.